All right, good evening. Today is Monday, December 12th at 6:30 PM. This is the Olentangy Schools, Olentangy Board of Education regular meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Dr. Dabricko.
Present.
Mr. Lester.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Dr. Wallach.
Here.
Dr. Weiss.
Here.
All right, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written. There's no amendments.
So moved.
A second, please.
A second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All right, please call the roll, Mr. Jenkins.
Mr. Lester.
Yes.
Dr. Wallach.
Yes.
Dr. Weiss.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Dr. Dabricko.
Yes.
All right, so we'll jump into the Board President's report. Let's have a couple of quick things. So this is our last meeting of the year, so it's interesting that it's kind of last, it's the end of the school board year, but you're at the middle of the school year. And I think if we reflect back in the last 12 months, we've got a lot to be proud of. We welcomed three new members to the board and the board continues to operate, you know, at a high level and operate really well. So for that, I'm thankful. So our next meeting is January 12th. We'll meet to organize and get on with the next school board year. We will be covering, we've got two presentations tonight, but probably most importantly, in the superintendent's report, we'll be talking about redistricting. You know, redistricting is something that Olentangy has done, I'll say, a number of times, but it's like double-digit number of times. It's a necessary, I'd say, necessary evil of a growing district in that you have to redraw lines when you open buildings. And it's a responsibility that the Ohio Revised Code places squarely on the superintendent, on Dr. Rafe, I'm sorry, Mr. Rafe.
Yeah.
Don't want to get into myself.
No.
Doc, uh, Mr. Rafe. And I know it's something he also takes very seriously. It's a big responsibility that we all take very seriously, and those are hard decisions to make, but we have to make them, and we do, and we try to do them the best way possible. Want to thank the redistricting committee. They spent many hours developing their recommendations, and we look forward to Mr. Rafe's superintendent's report and his recommendation. With that, I'll open it up to any other board member with things to report.
Yeah, so in our, since our last board meeting, we've actually had two meetings of the mental health, student mental health and well-being committee. We're trying to meet monthly and then develop a set of recommendations on a rolling basis, as well as a final report at the end of the year. It continues to be just a really great group that I'm really proud of the work that we're doing, proud of the conversations that we're having here. One of our big first recommendations that is starting to be put into practice is we're having the district looking at seeking licensure through the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services and certification so that we can provide services directly through our schools to be considered a community behavioral health agency where we can, it frees us up to provide general services a little bit more effectively. We would be the only school district in the state that's seeking this licensure as sort of the first district to do it. We believe that it'll help, you know, create more consistent services for students and will also open us up to some grant funding to be able to do it all a little bit more effectively. The hope, I think, is that if we can do this and working with a consultant to help, you know, make that move a little bit more quickly, that we could have it in place for the next school year, starting next August. So we're keeping our fingers crossed about that, but we think it's only a positive that will help facilitate it. We're also talking about a broader initiative through the district to bring more attention to mental health issues. One of the biggest things that we see with mental health is the stigma and a lot of the things that, when you don't talk about it, when you don't have those sorts of conversations. So we're talking about what a broader campaign would look like and all the things that we could tie into it. Of course, this committee has parents and students and teachers and other community members on it, so we're bringing all of those perspectives together. So we'll continue to have some good work as we're moving forward there and looking forward to the report of the next meeting.
Terrific. Amy, Amy?
All good.
School Funding 101 will be held at Olentangy High School on January 31st, 6:30 PM. That's going to be a masterclass session of how we are, where we are in our district in regards to school funding in the state of Ohio. The focus is information and then building towards advocacy. I won't get caught in the weeds about where we are with school funding in the state of Ohio. I'll just ask everyone to be there on January 31st at Olentangy High School.
All right, terrific. So with that, we'll conclude the Board President's report and move on to our first presentation. It's the Inklings Writing Competition. We've got Valerie Bigum from Literacy Support and Amy Fletcher from the Gifted Program. Looks like we've got a guest with you as well.
I'm Amy Fletcher. I am from Shanahan.
And I'm Valerie Bigum. I'm the literacy specialist at Shanahan Middle Schools.
And this is our guest, Tessa, who is going to read a little excerpt from her winning fiction entry last year. So we are going to talk just a little bit about Inklings. Inklings started in the 2014-2015 school year. We did not start it. A former colleague of us started it. She's no longer in Olentangy. She's moved to another district. But we believed that it was a really wonderful opportunity for all of our writers to showcase their talent and possibly win a little trophy or prize from it, so we decided to continue that. We have three categories. Students can enter in fiction, poetry, and argument in grades three through eight. We provide awards for first through third in each grade level at each of those categories. So, and then we also have a judges pick award. So we have a total of 55 awards that we hand out. Last year, we had 421 total entries, and about 13% of those entries won an award from last year.
So a few things we'd like to highlight about our program that we think are really great for kids. Thinking of the Portrait of a Learner, we think there are some really great things that this program offers for kids. First of all, ask some to be really purposeful and think about what their interests and passions and talents are. And also, we think it gives them an opportunity to engage in an authentic writing competition and to publish their work in a fashion. We also think it gives them an opportunity to be resilient. It's pretty common to have kids submit in multiple categories or to submit multiple times before they place or even win, so we think that that's a great opportunity for our kids to be resilient and to learn and grow.
And this is just a list of our 55 winners from last year in each of the categories. And as you can see, they're entries from all of our elementaries and middle schools, and our prizes are really spread out amongst those. So it really is, when we say it's district-wide, it really is district-wide. We get a lot of entries from all of our schools. And now, for the interesting part, this is Tessa. She is a current sixth grader at Shanahan Middle School. She won for Helena the First as a fifth-grade fiction entry from Heritage Elementary School. So she's just going to read a short little excerpt from her story for you.
When I finally got out the door, I was scared again. I walked slowly to the bus stop, wanting to miss the bus, but then my mom would peep her head out again and yell at me, so I didn't risk it. There were only a few kids there. There was a girl with dirty hair, a boy that picked his nose, and then there was him. He came over to me grinning.
Isn't she great? So we also want to share with you an excerpt from a middle school piece. So this is an excerpt from Dear Music, which was the winner for seventh-grade poetry. Lauren is currently an eighth grader at Hyatt's Middle School. And again, this is just one stanza from her winning poem. "You brought me to my sister, giving her something, like a peace offering of sound, one that allowed us to bond, setting aside all of the childish bickering." I know, I saw some smiles. That makes us smile, too. So we really just wanted to say thank you for supporting our program. It truly is a district-wide competition and such a great opportunity for our writers. And we especially wanted to thank the curriculum team and the communications team who really helped make this competition possible, in addition to Amy and I. So thank you.
Before you sit down, any questions for? Just thank you, great work. Appreciate it.
And getting kids excited about writing, and when, right now, writing is like texting and emojis, right? Getting them excited about real writing, it's such a valuable skill in life and inspiring that creativity. I just can't thank you enough. It's wonderful.
Thank you.
Do we have some, we had some get published?
We had a couple.
We have a current seventh grader at Shanahan whose poetry has been published.
From Gleno?
Is that a former Gleno kiddo?
No, she was.
Oh, it's a boy.
I think she, no, she was Allen Creek.
Okay. Tessa, we wait, we're looking forward to that first published work.
If you can make her laugh.
We can do that.
Try it all week.
This is right-nile wrestle right here. Thanks, Amy.
Chailing on Wednesday? All right, so the next, and again, thank you so much. The next presentation item is our five-year capital improvement plan as Mr. Gordon makes his way to the podium with his scooter. We will, I will say, you know, as a district, the capital planning process has served us very well. It's a discipline that not every district has, and so I think it's really good that we take the time and invest the time and be very thoughtful about our capital plan, just like we do our technology plan and all the others, strategic plan. So with that, I look forward to your discussion, Jeff.
Thank you. I will be fairly quick this evening. On the screen, you will see the similar format that we've stayed with for previous years. One thing I want to ask you to do is actually skip over the bonds for right now because we're going to talk more in-depth about the bond side of it on the next slide, but just a couple of things I'll quickly go down through, just as a reminder. Technology at the top, along with our, that's our biggest category, along with then after that would be the asphalt and concrete, where we're spending just under a million dollars a year, or budget a million dollars. And then it just, it breaks down into what I call, what I call the buckets, and we adjust those annually as we get into projects. As our buildings age, you know, right now, we're spending a lot of money on HVAC mechanicals. As they age, you'll see the flooring and interior finishes, exterior, you know, those things will go up and other categories will drop down as we get through replacements. So those just, those fluctuate every year, and we try to budget those as close as we can. The biggest thing I want to make sure we talked about tonight was here with the bond. So if you look at the, draw your attention to two lines really on this bond. First, I'll say is, the top is last year's plan that we talked about last December. So fiscal year '22 will drop off, and you see there are a lot more bond projects that we finished last summer, that that funding now has fallen away. But the two lines I want to talk about, and then we'll talk more about when we get down to this year's bond portion, that is the school bus replacements. You see there, when we started, when we sold the 2020 bonds, we had a year left on the 2016 bonds for bus replacements. We'd been able to work the routes and not do as many replacements out of the 2016 bond, so we got an extra year on those. So that, in fiscal year '22, we were looking at five years out on school bus purchases. The roofing replacements, we had four years left on. So the two things about those is when you look at down below in the blue, underscore bus replacements, you see we only have three years left. Well, with the supply chain shortages and the cost, our buses went up so much that we were only able, we either had to buy less buses and keep the four-year or stay on our replacement schedule and replace for three years. So you'll see that we've shortened that schedule, and we have three years of bus replacements, and that's purely by the increase of buses. We're buying the same number of buses, they're just costing us a lot more right now to do that. The second line to draw your attention to, and you see at the bottom, is there's a carryover on roofing. We ran into last year that there was a shortage on the insulation, roofing insulation, so we didn't go out to bid for a major roofing project we would have done in the summer of 2022. So we held those funds for this year and then added for this year and even advanced some funds to have a bigger project. So we just, you approved, I think it was last month, the roofing bid already. So we've bid roofing for next summer now to get ahead of the supply chain, and that's why we're doing such a big project. So we'd carryover from last summer of '22, the summer that we'd planned for '23, and we had some alternates and some things we're going to go ahead and include in because it just makes sense, pull some money forward from the, what had been the fiscal year '24 number for roofing, and then you see the remainder, excuse me, the balance there in fiscal year '25 for roofing of the 1.5 million, which is what it had been before. So just a couple of things there that have changed based on supply chains and cost issues that adjusted what we were doing with the bonds. The other thing to notice there is that bond funding for the school bus replacements, roofing, and mechanicals, that was a five-year number based on the 20-year capital plan that Mr. O'Brien was talking about. So that, those numbers were to get us through five years of that replacement cycle. As you can see, now, we've gone through two years of that, and those last two years on fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27, those are empty on the bond side. So what happens if we hit that and we don't replace that funding is we go back to, you see on this, this one here, the lines like asphalt and technology and all of those, they'll have to decrease because we'll still need to replace buses, we'll still have mechanical replacements, chillers, things like that. Those are things we can't put off. There'll be other deferred maintenance we'll have to make. So these lines down below, like the asphalt and concrete and some of those bigger lines, you'll see those decrease because we'll only be doing the stuff that we have to do, like replacing buses and mechanical, and without the bond funding coming back in. So that's just food for thought as we move forward with that. And the last piece I will add before I ask for questions is we are now, we've added, last time we updated that 20-year plan was 2019, just we went on the bond. Now we've added elementary school and middle school, and we're starting construction on another elementary. So we actually are going to update, including all of those buildings, as well as the price increases, planning to have that done this spring to do another update on the 20-year plan to look forward.
Thank you, Jeff. So this is a little bit of an example of how kind of inflation isn't just a consumer issue in terms of prices, but it shows up in many, many places.
Yeah.
Such the impact, what we can get accomplished in any given, you know, block of time. Appreciate the update. Any questions, Mr. Gordon?
No.
Just.
Again, this has been vetted with the Facilities Committee.
Yes, we presented to them in November.
Sensory rooms, does that pay for one room, or what does it cost us?
No, those are a series of rooms. We actually have rolled those in, and those will start coming out of PI as we close out the sensory rooms and move that money back in. But that's, we basically have about one room a building is our goal.
So where, does each, I'm guessing, high school doesn't have sensory rooms, do they?
Some do.
Okay.
We had them, in some of our MH rooms, we added those at Liberty and Orange a couple of years ago. I think Olentangy has some, about half of our elementaries do, and we have them, and so we do continue to add those as needed, depending on the students in the building and the needs.
So where are we in a plan to have access in all schools, or is that part of the plan?
Yeah, yes, the plan is to have them in all schools. We've been adding them as we've moved students in that have had the need for them, but we'll be at the point soon where, if not by the end of this year, certainly by the end of next year, I think all buildings will have them.
So just, can you give a 30-second thing of what sensory rooms do? Because it fits within mental health, because sometimes students, it can be a make or break having access to the sensory room.
Well, you're probably asking the wrong person for that answer. I will defer to Mr. Rafe on that one.
He builds them, he doesn't run them.
Yeah, got it. Come on, Jack.
For students with special needs who can get overwhelmed, their senses can get overwhelmed, it's a place for deaspiration.
And really, any student, though, I would imagine.
I could have gave that answer, Jack. You could have given, I mean, there's a lot more depth you could have had on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Well, and this was just, you know, again, because I think with even newer board members, and you guys are part of the Facilities Committee and are starting to get up to speed on some of this stuff, but we as a district made a strategic decision in 2016's levy to put a PI levy, a one-mil PI levy on, it's the first time we ever had it, and obviously you see the need. But there were, we, for years, starting in the 2000s, when we had a levy, every, literally every year, we would always build a little bit of bond money into the levy to address some of these needs. But we got to the point where we were spending bond money, borrowing money for 30 years for technology and other purposes, so we made a strategic decision to create this fund. We added to it in 2020, and just so, you know, people know, those needs aren't going down, and we will have to add to that in the future because as we continue to grow, more facilities, more, you know, and those kind of things. We've kind of adopted the strategy of trying to put into some of the bigger ticket items, like a roof or a chiller or things that would last for 20, 25 years. A bus lasts?
15.
15 to 18?
If we stretch, if, right now, we're fortunate enough that if we're doing 18 years, it's really, those are our substitute buses.
Right.
So we're trying to keep our daily fleet.
So we've put the buses into the bond issues, but, you know, again, strategically moving forward, that's something we'll have to continually look at, what that looks like, because obviously we need to start talking about, we have the bond funding for elementary 17, we need to start talking about elementary 18 and 19 and when that will come on. Mr. Jenkins has already talked to Bond Council about what that could look like from a no-new millage issue coming forward and what else we could put into that to meet those needs because they're not going down, so.
We should also track as a metric, maybe, I don't know where, but average age of the bus and average age of the buildings. As that creeps up, you go from capital needs to improvement needs and maintenance needs. It's definitely where we're at.
Yeah, and that's what we ran into, and we had done the first capital plan before 2016, is we went towards that bond and that PI was really looking at, we had, everybody considered new buildings in Olentangy, but by the time we went in 2016, we had elementary schools that were 20 years old, high schools that was over 20 years old, and of course, Shanahan. So that, that is what we've really been watching, but we continue to build, so as the others get old and the new ones, then they're going to, it just, it all cycles, just like your house, so.
Thank you, Jeff.
With that, I will roll out of here.
It looks like you need a little maintenance yourself. All right, Mr. Rafe, the superintendent's report?
All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome.
See how my technology's working today. So it is always great, all throughout our district, we have kids and staff and parents and just so many people donating their time all throughout the district. So our Teacher Academy students volunteered at Delaware, People in Need at the Holiday Clearing House, Walnut Creek Elementary students collected holiday meals and toy donations, so, and those are just a couple of examples of things that are happening all throughout the district. Liberty High School here, you see, participated in Delaware County's Fight Against Hunger. They donated 1,000 boxes of cereal, so, to local food pantries. So again, I just, you know, we could have filled up 20 slides, 28, I'm sure, you know, every building has got things going on, so we're very, just very thankful and appreciative of all of our students and staff who participate in those events all throughout, and they do it year-round. It's not just at the holidays, so it's just, it's great that they do that. Our staff choir and the Orange Jazz Band, oh, wait a minute, I missed one. I'm out of order, sorry.
I got it, I got it.
Did I do that, or did you?
You did.
Jeez. You know, I'm always technologically challenged, it's all right. I missed this, was this performance good, Mr. Foss? Did you enjoy it? Good. So they, Orange High School Jazz Band and the Staff Choir performed at the Orange Township Holiday Event, so, and our Staff Choir, led by Katie Solcott, is going to be performing at Zulites on December 18th. So again, they're just having a great time with that. That kind of grew out of our staff convocation from this year, and they're just having a lot of fun with that. I just did it again there, Dustin, I wouldn't give you that. Hyatt's Middle School does a great thing. They did it on November 22nd, Hyatt's Serves Day all throughout the school. They had speakers and various nonprofits and service, various nonprofits and service projects for students. They, again, just an exhaustive list of all kinds of things that happened all throughout the building, from cleaning up the school garden, collecting trash, making cookies, warm kits for school rocks, party boxes for Columbus City Schools, lap blankets, snowflakes for children's hospitals. So congratulations to Hyatt's and all of their kids. So again, it just, you know, I speak from a place of great pride when I talk about the work of our students and staff in those regards, very appreciative. Our Director of Student Well-being, Dr. Alicia Behrens, was awarded the 2022 Guardians for Good Award from Helpline of Delaware and Moro Counties. Guardians for Goods award is presented annually to an individual organization with helpline service, territory, superior advocacy and sponsorship and support. So, you know, Dr. Behrens has been a true champion in the area of student well-being. We couldn't be more proud of the work that she's doing for all of our kids. So congratulations to her, and it's really nice that she was recognized for her efforts. As you know, we've got a community engagement series going on. Our next one will be on student mental health and well-being. Dr. Behrens and Dr. Branson will present an overview of the district's work and why it's important to student learning and trauma response protocols. We do a lot of really good work with regards to trauma response because all of our kids have experienced some type of trauma in their lives, and it's really important for our staff to understand that as trauma happens within the school, how they respond to that. So Wednesday, December 11th, here at our Olentangy Administrative Office, is 6:30. I encourage the community to come out for that.
Is that supposed to be January 11th?
January, February 11th.
Yeah. December 11th is yesterday.
What, hey, you watching this?
I have one.
Sloppy. Go, I'll say it for you, Mr. Brant, sloppy. I got you. It's mine, it's on me. I didn't do a good job reviewing it. I was a little preoccupied with the, with this, this work today, with our redistricting announcement, so. So here are our current attendance boundaries. As you know, since redistricting in the spring of 2021 for the opening of Shale Meadows, we've now grown in those two short years to become from the sixth-largest district in the state to the fourth-largest district in the state, and we continue to grow. So in looking back over the last 30 years, we've grown from one K-12 building to opening our 28th school building next fall. And as Mr. O'Brien noted in his President's Report, state law gives me two critical responsibilities, and that is to assign staff and assign students. So assigning students involves examining our current attendance boundary and following the Board's, Board of Education's redistricting guidelines. So you guys give us the guidance to make the decisions, and we try to follow those as best they can, although that's becoming increasingly more difficult to follow them holistically as the district becomes more and more complex. We had 13 communicate, 13 community members came together to help our administrative team take a deep dive into our attendance boundaries, our building utilizations, our feeder products, and our projected enrollment growth. They held two community forums, they had, I think, seven meetings in totality. We, as a leadership team, met 12 different times. We analyzed feedback from 1,156 community members. And I really want to thank those community members that provided feedback throughout the committee's survey. The feedback given allowed the committee to look at a few areas that may be impacted in the elementary 17 process because as difficult as this was, we're going to do this again because we're going to open an elementary school in 2024. So we had to really, this made this process more complex because we had to be really mindful that we didn't want to move some areas at this time because we knew there's a good possibility we're going to have to move them again. So ultimately, the committee presented me with a recommendation, which I have accepted. Now, that's not something I've done in the past because prior, previously, the committee's given us maybe two recommendations, and I've kind of blended them together, but this time, they really did winnow it down into one recommendation, you know, and I really want to make sure I thank loud and clear those volunteers for dedicating their time those volunteers for dedicating their time to this important task, and it was, it's not always, it's, it's really difficult, we, you know, again, they're not, they're kids, they're not numbers, but we have to really be very mindful about what our experiences are, and how schools are overcrowded, and, and obviously, opening the new school is one thing, but, you know, again, we have overcrowding and growth and all kinds of factors that go into it, so, the attendance boundary changes will relieve overcrowding at Heritage Elementary and Liberty Tree Elementary, and again, I want to emphasize, the elementary students moving to a new elementary next fall will not be affected in the redistricting process for elementary 17, you know, I, I got a lot of great questions all throughout the process, why can't we just build onto our current schools, so everyone can stay at our, their, their current middle school, and we don't have to redistrict, and that's, that's obviously something we discussed long and hard when we decided to build Berlin High School, do we really want a 3,000 student high school, and we, we came back and said that's not a good thing, and, you know, all of our middle schools have over 900 students, Orange, Shanahan, and Liberty have over 1,000, and Berkshire has over 1,300, so, and in the entire greater Columbus area, there are six middle schools over 1,000 students, and we have the majority of them, and Delaware Dempsey's the other one, so that's just not the best learning environment for our kids, so it's just one of those things, as we open a new school, we just have to do it, you know, people express concerns about not attending the school closest to their home, and, and, you know, that, that would, it's always the easiest thing, that would be beneficial, but given, it's just impractical, given the disparities in school populations that we have, I think if, if every student who lived within two miles of Orange Middle School attended Orange Middle School, it'd be about 2,500 kids, so, it's one of those things that, that's just not possible, so, as, as an example, you know, I, I really do feel very, when, when people get upset about having to change schools, for me, it's validation of the great job our schools are doing, no one wants, when, if no one wants to leave their school, that means the school, they love their school, and I get that, I've experienced it as a parent, my daughter got, went to four elementary schools and two middle schools in, in her time here in Olentangie, Dr. Wallach, you're going to see, your middle school boundaries are changing, so you'll, you'll see that here soon, but, you know, we really have to try to balance it all out, be mindful about how we're moving people, not having multiple moves, not having to move people in the future, I feel, you know, we're trying to solidify the boundaries all throughout the southern end of the district, as the northern end of the district continues to grow, and then I think subsequent redistrictings will primarily impact just the northern ends of the district, and we can really lock in these southern boundaries where we don't have any future growth pointed at it, so I think all in all, that's a good thing, so Justin Rich from Cooperative Strategies has, it's gonna, we've created a video that we're going to share online, we're going to post it to our district website, we're going to email it to all the community members, so I'm going to share that with you, that will show the changes in the boundary areas.
Thank you, Mr. Ray, I'd first like to review some of the drivers for this process by showing the boundaries and current utilizations, the table on the left illustrates the current capacity, enrollment, and utilization of each building, which is the enrollment divided by the capacity, the capacities and enrollments shown throughout this presentation do not include pre-K students or seats, as you can see in the chart, at the elementary level, Cheshire, Heritage, Johnny Kate Corners, Liberty Tree, and Oak Creek are all utilized over 100%, the two most overutilized schools, Heritage and Liberty Tree, are being addressed in this process, because they are less likely to be impacted by elementary 17, at the middle school level, Berkshire, Liberty, Orange, and Shanahan all have some level of overutilization, Berlin Middle School is intended to relieve this overutilization, for the most part, high school changes were not considered during this process, the exception to this is the removal of a high school boundary island, which I will outline later in this presentation, the tables in the center of the slide detail the percentage of students from each school moving on to middle school together, for example, 27% of the students attending Alum Creek Elementary will attend Orange Middle, and the other 73% of that population will attend Shanahan Middle, in the map on the right, elementary school boundaries are shown as solid colors in the background, middle school boundaries are shown using an orange outline, and high school boundaries are shown in the purple outlines, the school points are also present on the map, shown as green circles for elementary, orange circles for middle, and purple circles for high schools, the main driver for this process is the addition of Berlin Middle School set to open in the fall of 2023, along with the new middle school, adjustments were made to overcrowded elementary schools that are not likely to be impacted by elementary 17, which is currently set to open in the fall of 2024, the information on this slide details the recommendation, which will take effect starting in the fall of 2023, as I mentioned before, adjustments were made to provide utilization relief to the two most overcrowded elementary schools, in order to minimize the impact on any given student, some areas were left alone in anticipation of the elementary 17 redistricting process, this was done to avoid moving students in back-to-back years, Berlin Middle School provides the relief needed at the middle school level, Berlin, Berkshire, and Hyatt's have been left with room for growth, given the large number of housing units being constructed within these boundaries, minimal changes were made to the high school boundaries, I will cover the specifics of this change later in this presentation, the feeder percentages are also available on this slide, these are the percentage of students who move on to middle or high school together from that school, for example, 28% of Alum Creek Elementary students will attend Berkshire for middle school, and 72% will attend Shanahan, the relatively low percentage feeder splits at Cheshire Elementary and Glen Oak Elementary will be reviewed during the elementary 17 process, in total, 3.8% of elementary students, 18.2% of middle school students, and less than 1% of high school students were moved, at the middle school level, 75% of the students moved are being moved to the new Berlin Middle School, this map illustrates the recommended middle school boundaries, the boundary for the new Berlin Middle School is shown in dark pink, the tables on this slide are the same as the previous slide, I will now outline each boundary change within this recommendation, starting with elementary boundary changes, first, there are two elementary changes in the Polaris area, the retreat at Polaris and the Polaris Grand Apartments will move from Glen Oak to Freedom Trail, this allows Glen Oak to relieve Heritage, just south of this change, along Old State Road, are the Tapestry Park Apartments, which will move from an Alum Creek Elementary School, Shannon Middle School, and Olentangie High School feeder, to Freedom Trail Elementary School, Orange Middle School, and Orange High School, both of these changes remove an island from the Polaris area and improves feeder patterns for this area, the next change provides utilization relief to Heritage Elementary School, the High Meadows, Green Meadows area, including High Meadows Village, High Meadows Village condominiums, Sycamore Meadows, Fox Ridge, Green Meadows, and Burn Bray, move from Heritage Elementary to Glen Oak Elementary, moving on to the southwest region of the district, Gulf Village, west of Sawmill Parkway, moves to Scioto Ridge Elementary School from Liberty Tree Elementary School, Liberty Tree is expected to experience growth over the next few years due to housing developments in the central area of the boundary, and this change leaves room for that growth, this change includes the following subdivisions within Gulf Village, Estates, Fairways, Lakes Edge, Links, and Palisades, while this change does put Scioto Ridge Elementary School slightly over capacity, little housing development is expected to occur in this area, limiting potential growth, the boundary change on this slide is a proactive measure that does not impact any current students, the portions of the Liberty Grand subdivision that are still under development are currently split between Indian Springs Elementary School and Liberty Tree Elementary School, this change moves all of the Liberty Grand development into the Indian Springs boundary, leaving additional room for growth at Liberty Tree Elementary, this concludes the elementary changes, at the middle school level, we will start with the Berlin Middle School boundary, set to open in the 2023-24 school year, the Berlin Middle School boundary encompasses all of the Shale Meadows Elementary boundary and half of the Arrowhead Elementary boundary, which includes everything in Arrowhead north of Hollenback Road, Shanahan Road, and Hyatt's Road, Berlin Middle School will also house the majority of the students from Cheshire Elementary, everyone living west of Alum Creek, this school will provide relief for Berkshire Middle and Hyatt's Middle, and take on the majority of the growth that was previously pointed to Berkshire Middle, the southern portion of Alum Creek Elementary surrounding the Polaris Mall will move from Orange Middle to Berkshire Middle, this change includes the North Park Place Apartments, North Park Place condos, the Edge at Polaris, the Point at Polaris, the Lakes at Polaris, and Village at Polaris Park, along with this, Tapestry Park Polaris Apartments will change feeder patterns entirely, from an Alum Creek Elementary School, Shanahan Middle School, and Olentangie High School feeder, to a Freedom Trail Elementary School, Orange Middle School, and Orange High School feeder, this is the only high school change present in these recommendations, and the reason for this is to avoid creating an additional feeder split, next, the southern portion of Gulf Village will move from Liberty Middle School to Hyatt's Middle School, this change moves students out of Liberty Middle, allowing that building to provide utilization relief to Shanahan Middle School, this change includes the Woods at Seldom Seen, the Preserve at Seldom Seen, Rutherford Estates, and the following subdivisions within Gulf Village, Gulf Village Proper, Rutherford, Woods, Stone Bridge, and Reserve, with this change, all of Gulf Village will attend Hyatt's Middle School together, the last change at the middle school level involves the Olentangie Falls area, moving from Shanahan Middle School to Liberty Middle School, this provides relief to Shanahan Middle School by removing an area of development into Liberty Middle School, this move includes all of Olentangie Falls, both the existing housing and the developing phases, as well as the Hyatt's Meadows development, the table on this slide details the projected enrollment for each school boundary and illustrates the current and potential development, at this point in time, the Olentangie local school district is approximately 85% built out, based on the identified vacant developable land left within the district, thank you for your time.
So I'll take any questions you might have on that, it's a, as I say, you know, it's never easy, it's something that we just, you know, we, we take very seriously, as we try to push, push forward with creating the best environments possible, there is an inter-district transfer process for people who do want to, to look at that, we will look at that here this spring, if people, obviously, have been reassigned, you know, we've, we've talked before about possibly grandfathering in fifth graders or eighth graders, rising fifth graders, rising eighth graders, all those things, the logistics issues that get created with transportation and running two buses into a neighborhood, take a, a small group of kids who may want to go, you know, they're just, they're just too great to, to, to handle, so, but, but there are those possibilities to examine the inter-district transfer process, and anytime we go through redistricting, we're probably a little bit more liberal in how we apply that, but, but again, here, you know, Heritage and Liberty Tree are, they were, you know, we're overflowing kids there, we've been overflowing out of there all year, and right now, we started overflowing out of Cheshire, fourth grade, fourth and, fourth and fifth, because of the large class sizes, we don't have room to add any more kids, and, and obviously, we do believe we'll address Cheshire next year for '24, when the next building opens.
Just, I guess a question or comment, so maybe if you could spend a minute on the support we provide to the students that move, when they move, and then, two is, I'm a little surprised, 85% built out, that seemed high, so that kind of caught me.
Mr. Ray, I can probably answer that, because that's my turn.
Sure, Karen, Daniel Hamburg, from Cooperative Strategies, be happy to have you answer that.
So that 85% includes all of the development, assuming it's all built out, and that is based on current zoning, so if like something changes from industrial to residential zoning, that percentage comes back down?
Or agriculture.
Or existing zoning today.
Or agriculture.
Using ag land and residential land to identify those vacant parcels that could be built out, we also look at topography and.
And it was, you know, I mean, that was why it was so, like, we, we did, obviously, we did work with Berlin Township on the Berlin Business Park and take 2,000 acres offline, and that's a significant, because that got rezoned as now planned commercial, and so that probably did push that percentage up a bit, but it has fluctuated over time, there was like a time where I think I, I was feeling like we were at 65%, and then a bunch of rezoning happened, and we dropped back down to 50%, somewhere in my recollection of numbers comes out.
Maybe we should just caution people that that number can and will change.
Right.
Don't have people thinking, oh, Olentangie's almost built out, or maybe based on current zoning, yes, but we know that zoning changes happen, and we have to react to those.
Yeah, and as far as support goes, you know, we do a really, I think we, we try to be very, very, very purposeful about how we're transitioning students, and, and, you know, when the kids are, are getting moved, making sure that there's induction programs, welcoming programs, you know, kind of just like you do when you transition from fifth to sixth grade, eighth grade to ninth grade, very, very similar, the principals are very purposeful about that, you know, meeting with parents, if parents, I mean, some parents are just, you know, some kids and parents just kind of roll with this, and others, others don't, so I think it's really important, if, if a child is getting moved, and, and there are concerns that the parent, you know, reaches out to, or our own principals, their current principal makes a connection with the receiving principal, and, you know, those connections are made, if there are students who, even to the point of, if, if there are kids, say, from Liberty Tree going to Scioto Ridge, or Heritage going to Glen Oak, that kind of want to be in the same class, because that's what they're comfortable with right now, those accommodations, you know, are made, and, and, you know, again, it's just a matter of communicating whatever a student needs, we try to meet those needs, to make sure that they get acclimated and settled into their new environment, and, and, you know, off they go, you know, it's, I think about being here for the last 20 years, and the number of times we've gone through redistricting processes, we've opened new buildings, you know, our kids are, you know, very resilient, and they, kids do okay with, with these changes as they, as they move forward, some do better than others, just like in every, in every situation, change is, change is hard, a lot of times, change is harder for, harder for adults than it is for kids, but, you know, again, that, we don't want to ever minimize whatever it is for any individual student or any individual family, we want to just try to support, support them all as best as possible.
Any questions? Start this way.
Not a, not a question, but just some comments, I wouldn't, I'm very appreciative of the committee's mindfulness of the feeder patterns, it gives me a lot of comfort to see, I, I mean, when we look at these elementary to middle school feeder patterns, these 100%, 100% keeping these groups of kids together, I think is really impressive, the way this has been done, and I know it's not, you know, it's, it's not 100% across the board, but I know, having previously served on a redistricting committee, I understand this process, it is complicated, I got quite a lesson in how this, it was, it was honestly, was such an eye-opening and wonderful experience when I had, prior to being on the board, served in this capacity, because understanding the layers of information, the, the, the data analysis that goes into this, I know that there were other individuals I served with who are selflessly giving of their time, and ultimately making a recommendation to you that is moving their child, and they don't really want it, but they ultimately know it's going to be what's best for the district overall, my children are, are going to be going in a different pattern here now. My children are going to be going in a different pattern here now. I, I think you said it, you know, kind of earlier, it, we may not love the change, and I think it's imperative that all parents advocate for what's best for their children, but I think it's really great that when you do get moved, you're moved from one excellent school to another excellent school. You know, that, that's encouraging. So just a big thank you to everyone who was a part of the committee and gave of their time, very selflessly, to make really tough decisions. Again, moving kids, not numbers.
And, and, you know, Randy and Krista really ran the process, so I want to thank them for all the work they did to make that happen. They did a great job helping, you know, organize that committee, and Todd was involved all throughout as we went forward. As, you know, just, it's just, it's hard. It's, it's one of those things, you know, it's one of those things that it's better to be having to do this as we grow than, as, rather than a district that's contracting and closing schools and having to redraw boundaries, because there are districts in Ohio having to experience that. So this is one of those, you know, problems at Olentangie's, it's, you know, none of us like it. I just don't want, you know, again, I didn't, I mean, we've, we've changed attendance boundaries every year I've been superintendent, because we've had over, you know, growth in an area that, that we had to do, we call them a pocket redistricting, where we moved a small area, a lot of the apartment areas around Polaris, where we had, we had capacity and moved areas where we were, you know, again, having over 750 students in an elementary school is just not, not good. So obviously, we did the big redistricting when Berlin opened, and now this is another pretty big one when we're opening a middle school, so bless you.
But yeah, just, those lines aren't arbitrarily drawn. There's a, there's a lot of thought that goes into it, and my kids do not attend neither elementary nor middle school that is closest to where we live, and that's okay.
Well, I just want to echo that, and I, it is, when you think about the enormity of these tasks and the enormity that, that comes with continued years and having that level of thoughtfulness to what the future holds, it, it makes the results and, and the way that it is drawn all the more impressive. It doesn't make it easier for folks that are impacted, and I, I think we have to be, you know, really, as we talk about resilience and as we talk about that as, as part of one of those core things in the portrait of a learner, this is when we have to put all that into practice, and we have to make sure that we're doing everything that we can so that we are able to help students be able to thrive and to do that. And sometimes that is more intensive support, because sometimes kids don't make friends as easily in one area. They have, you know, they, they have their support groups, and we want to make sure that they have other ones. I, I think ultimately, this is, is for the good of the whole district, we're relieving some of this pressure so that teachers are able to do everything more effectively. But, you know, as you heard Mr. Rafe say, as you heard everyone say here, the goal is to absolutely make sure that we are providing the best, best environment for each student, and whatever support we can give to help alleviate the tension of this, we're going to do it. So, you know, I hope that that's understood in the community, and I, I hope that people take advantage of it, you know, to, to be able to get that support if they need it.
Dr. Wise?
A few questions, Mr. Rafe. First of all, is there anybody who's here in our massive audience? I know Trustee Faust is here from Orange Township. Thank you for being on redistricting. It's important, collaboration between Township and the district. Anybody else here on redistricting that you noticed? Okay. Well, thank you for doing that. It's appreciated.
Mrs. Fiesel, you know, she did like 20 redistrictings back in the day. She just couldn't not be here to witness another redistricting announcement.
Perfect, so thank you. How soon will the intra-district transfer information be available now that the boundaries?
We'll start that after the first, after we turn the first of the year. Typically, we close high school by.
We'll go January 6th, February 6th, decisions by spring break.
For high school, middle school, and then, because there'll be people that won't want to go to a brand-new middle school, so we'll have to look at that and see how that goes. And then, elementary, we have that same, we open up the process to apply.
And we'll close that new this year, we'll close that by spring break.
And then, we'll make our decisions after.
What, what does that timeline of function of, just staffing, or?
Correct. We usually do elementary, because we get a lot of elementary enrollment in the summer. So we can't, you know, we want to approve too many elementary inter-district transfers and then have to add, you know, add sections and those kind of things as, as enrollment comes in in the summer, and not, you know, again, overcrowd any, any given, any given school. Like I said, we are a little bit more liberal, we'll be mindful of that from a staffing perspective and a class size perspective, especially at those receiving schools like Glen Oak and Souda Ridge, because we don't want to send a bunch of kids there, and all of a sudden, those kids are in huge classes. So we want to be very mindful of how we staff those buildings, Mr. Meyer, moving forward. So.
So last question, I'm thinking about new construction and, and folks that are planning to build a house, they've given a builder a good chunk of change, and they've watched interest rates go up, and they see this blank piece of land where they're going to be moving. Is there any way to know where that is, where they're going to go to school? Because they don't even have an address yet.
No. Yeah, and, yeah, I mean, you know, obviously, we have our, we have a GIS help system in our, I mean, it shows on our website where that is currently, but the reality is, especially in the high-growth areas, there will be more change. So like I said before in my presentation, what we're trying to, what we tried to accomplish with this was to really lock in the far southern end of the district as we continue to move forward. The elementary '17 process, we'll have to roll some stuff north, and we'll have to roll some areas south to relieve some overcrowding at, at a couple of current buildings. But, you know, we, again, we, those decisions haven't been made, but we had, we, we had to have an idea of it as we headed into this process, because the last thing we wanted to do was move somebody from one building to another, and then all of a sudden, move them again. And, and that, I did that my very first year, and I, I mean, that was a bad, that was a mistake, and I admitted I made the mistake and tried to fix it, but, you know, it, it is, you know, at a, at a middle school with 1,400 kids at Shanahan, we had to get some students out of there.
So there is a school attached to GIS, so if the, okay.
Correct.
And the new GIS calculator with these decisions will be available on the website tomorrow, or at 2:30 tonight, and then tomorrow morning, we'll email everybody on that calculator.
Impressive.
The slides and the video.
Yeah, great. That is it.
And when does this go into effect?
Next school year.
Next school year.
Fall of '23.
Anything else?
All right, thank you for your questions. Just a couple of highlights on our superintendent action items. We have three retirements. Leslie Miller, longtime kindergarten teacher at Cheshire and other places in the district. Peggy Olson, who's been the librarian, library media specialist at Souda Ridge Elementary School since the building opened, and Cindy Reynolds, who's a longtime family consumer science, former literacy support teacher, she's at Orange High School. So I wish them all well in their retirements. And since I missed the meeting where Ms. Eddy was, her name was on the agenda, I do want to make sure I publicly thank and congratulate our great OTA president, Elaine Eddy, on her retirement. We have two administrative employments for the, this school year. Hiring a People Services Supervisor to replace Leanna Ford, who's going up to be the Director of People Services for Buckeye Valley. Rebecca Pack is coming to us from Columbus. Is Rebecca here? Rebecca, no, Rebecca's not here. She wasn't able to join us. And Melanie Andres is moving from Souda Ridge Elementary to come over here and be our Assistant Director of Human Resources, so congratulations, Melanie. Very happy to have her joining our team over here in the administrative office. We have our second staff member at Berlin High School, Berlin Middle School. Kristi Payler is going from Berlin High to Berlin Middle to be the Building Secretary, so congratulations to Kristi. Three kind of big-ticket items, we are buying 14 buses, 13 typical buses and one special education bus with a lift from Rush Truck Centers through the Meta Bus Purchasing Program. We have the approval of the Sports Medicine Services Agreement with Ohio State Wexner Medical Center for another five years. Really, really happy with that arrangement we have with Ohio State. This is, Ohio State provides that service to our district for athletic trainers and sports performance coaches at no cost to the district, so we're very, very thankful for their partnership. We have a donation of land from BZ Realty. This land is actually a portion of Evans Farm, so we have designated that. It's at a corner of Peach Blow and Pyatt, kind of in between Arrowhead and Shale Meadows in the northern central part of the district. But, but again, we've identified how that's going to relieve overcrowding in the northern part of the district, and won't affect any parts of the southern part of the district. So that land donation, it's kind of funky, but the bond language at Elementary Two, when we passed the bond language in 2020, it was for two elementaries, Elementary One, Elementary Two, we're designated, this is our 17th elementary. And there's our important dates. I do want to highlight, obviously, the end of second quarter's coming up, winter break is coming up. We are resuming classes on January 2nd, and I've gotten some questions from community members about January 2nd. Since January 1st is, is, is a Sunday, the actual federal holiday is on January 2nd. You know, we approve our calendar far, far in advance, so we, we did obviously that a few years ago. Traditionally, our break is, you know, three weekends and two full weeks, and I think we discussed it long and hard, that a lot of our community goes back to work on Monday. So we think it was important for us to be back in school on Monday, so that's what we kind of used as our philosophy, and I motioned to the two main drivers of the calendar process, Ms. Eddy and Mr. Wright. And, and, you know, it is interesting, we did put this calendar out for feedback from our entire staff. We put it out to the community for 30 days, and two or so years ago, we didn't hear one question about January 2nd, so we proceeded forward with this calendar. You know, in the future, if we had to present this as an option, we probably would do something differently, but quite honestly, at this point in time, it's just too late to change our school calendar. So we're pushing forward. Parents who, who have plans and missed this as a date, thinking we were going to be off, can do an ALA, they can call their student in, and the principal will excuse the absence. But, you know, we are going to be presenting the calendar, the next calendar for approval in March of 2023, so we encourage everybody to pay attention and give us good feedback. And our next meeting is January 12th, which will just be our org meeting?
Correct.
Correct. There's your answer. All right, thank you.
Okay, our next agenda item is the treasure report. Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. I just have the usual slate of items this evening. Approval of meeting minutes from November 15th, the November financials for 2022, amended permanent appropriations, and then some donations. So if you'd like, I can go over those items now or later when we discuss them. Would you prefer them to be reviewed now?
Oh, no, we can do it when you present your treasure.
Okay. And that is all I have for the evening.
Perfect, thank you. All right, we'll now go to public participation. Do we have any comments for public participation?
We do. We have Brooke Rigdon, 252 Hideaway Court in Powell, and she would like to address the Board about redistricting and attendance boundary committee.
She left. So I guess she'll surrender her time. All right. All right, we're ready to start voting. I'm going to take and present the board action items separately. So I'll present Board Action Item A, which is approval of a resolution of intent to not provide career technical education in grades seven and eight. This is consistent with our current practice, this isn't any kind of new provision, but it's just required by statute to approve the resolution. So with that, could I please have a motion for Board Action Item A?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Dr. Wise? Any discussion on Board Action Item A? No? All right, please call the roll, Mr. Jenkins.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Dabricko?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
All right, Kerry's. I'll now present Board Action Item B, and that is to assign a President pro tempore for the 2023 Board of Education Organizational Meeting to be held on Thursday, January 12th, 2023. This is required because effective 12/31 of 2022, our appointment as leaders of the Board, Dr., Mr. Lester, myself, I'm sorry, Dr. Wise and myself expires, and so we need a temporary president to open the organizational meeting on January 12th, and I recommend that is Dr. Libby Wallach. So with that, could I please have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Dabricko?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Jenkins, could you please present the treasure action items?
Yes, thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Board members, just like to call your attention to Exhibit B1, which would be the minutes from our last board meeting on November the 15th. Hope you find them in good order. If there's any questions, please let me know. Next would be Exhibit B2. I would just briefly like to call your attention to what would be Page 4. Again, that is a continuing view of where we are, district cash flow-wise versus the forecast amount. Your third column that says actual plus projected is our cash flow projections, and that will be always aligned with a five-year forecast that does not change. As you can see, as we stand at the end of November, our cash is about $1.368 million higher than anticipated, or at least higher than budget, and our expenses are $955,000 lower than what we anticipate. So you can see in the notes that that would actually create a fluctuation, a good fluctuation of $2.3 million better than budget. So we're on a good pace so far.
And that, do we believe that those trends will sustain, or is there a timing element to some of that?
I believe there's a timing element to some of it, yeah. You know, right now, I'd rather be, obviously, $2.3 million to the good about halfway through the fiscal year, that's for sure. Exhibit B3, you're probably just used to seeing the cover page of the changes to the adjustment, or beg your pardon, the appropriation adjustments. I actually want you to see the appropriations themselves, so the full-blown resolution is there. It is just obviously to avail you of the information that's changing across each one of those funds. Any questions about the appropriations?
Nope.
Biggest change you might see is the House Bill 264. What we normally have done is transferred money into the bond fund and paid it from there. We're just going to go ahead and pay it from the general fund, which is where the proceeds came from anyway.
Okay.
Next exhibit, B4. Thank you very much to the Orange High School Athletic Boosters, a $4658 donation to the school district, and that is noted as, as stated there. And I have, at this point in time, nothing further.
All right, so could I get a, a motion to approve the treasure action items A through D?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on treasure action items? All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Dr. Dabricko?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. All right, Mr. Rafe, would you please present the superintendent action items? I know we've got to pull a couple, so.
Yeah, so I'm going to start with Superintendent Action Item A5, approval of administrative plan for Rebecca J. Pack, People Services Supervisor, for approval.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve Superintendent Action Item A5?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on Superintendent Action Item A5? All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Dabricko?
Epstein.
And I will present Superintendent Action Item G, which is the Sports Medicine Service Agreement with Ohio State.
All right, could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on Superintendent Action Item G? All right, please call the roll.
Dr. Dabricko?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Epstein.
Mr. Lester.
I'm staying.
And then I will present Superintendent Action Items A, 1 through 4, 6.
You just go with the remaining.
Remaining, okay, got you.
So moved.
Yes, sir.
You've been practicing that.
Second.
We have a motion in a second? Any discussion on the remaining action items?
Yes, if I may. I would be really remiss here if I did not address the fact, is with regret that I'm going to see Ms. Melanie Andres move on. In the year and a half that my children have been at Sioda Ridge Elementary, we've come to love that school. You have created a beautiful learning environment, or you've continued to foster a beautiful learning environment for all students. I'm thrilled my kiddos are there. We will miss you tremendously, but I also believe, so the hits just keep coming tonight. Thanks. What is good at the district level will trickle down and be good for all students. So I just want to say thank you before I vote on this.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
I beg your pardon, Mr. O'Brien. Where's my motion in second on that?
I made a motion.
Okay.
Seconded. Dr. Wallach and Dr. Wise.
Mr. Lester.
Yes.
Dr. Wallach.
Yes.
Dr. Wise.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Dr. Dabricko.
Yes.
All right, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn C-Day, D-A. Good job.
Snaps.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Again, similar to the pro tempore, we've got to adjourn this way for Robert's rules, because we technically don't meet again until the next year. So please call the roll.
Dr. Dabricko.
Yes.
Mr. Lester.
Yes.
Dr. Wallach.
Yes.
Dr. Wise.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes. All right, thank you, everyone, we're adjourned.